Modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, the Boston City Council is conducting its meeting remotely. Viewers can watch our meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I will ask our clerk to call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counsel Baker.
Yeah.
Counsel Bach.
Present.
Counsel Braden.
Present.
Counsel Campbell.
Here.
Counsel Campbell. Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Counsel Asabi George.
Present.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counsel Flynn.
Here.
Counsel Janey.
Present.
Counsel Mahia.
Present.
Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu. Madam President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will begin our meeting with the invocation. Counsel Asabi George will introduce our clergy today, and then after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I'm pleased to introduce Reverend Liz Steinhouser from St. Stephen's Episcopal Church and Youth Programs in the South End. In addition to being a Reverend, Liz has over 30 years of being a youth worker and community organizer. Liz has been with St. Stephen's since 2003 and is the Senior Director of Community Engagement. She has worked with my office in a variety of capacities, but especially through the St. Stephen's Parent Mentor Program and public education advocacy. I'm grateful for Liz's deep commitment to social justice and service in this city. Thank you, Liz, for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me. Good afternoon. It's an honor to be with you, and I'm grateful to Counsel Asabi George for inviting me to be with you today. Right now, at this very moment, we have young people in our building in the South End and in a neighboring Episcopal church in Lower Roxbury, using our Wi-Fi and eating lunch and getting support from our staff for their virtual learning in school. Later this afternoon, we'll welcome more young people for our in-person after-school programs with art and music and running around and friends and social and emotional support, all with safe COVID practices. And at the same time, our staff are getting ready for our 21st Summer of the Be Safe Academic and Enrichment Program, which this summer will offer 150 young people opportunities for fun and fresh air at sites in Upphams Corner in Dorchester and Lower Roxbury in the South End. Thanks to a long partnership with the City of Boston's BCYF, 90 teens will have meaningful employment working with younger students this summer, and some of them are working with us right now. So on behalf of all the members of our St. Stephen's community, some of whom are Episcopal and many of whom are not, we're very grateful for all the hard work being done by council members and their staff to keep our city safe and healthy. And now, let us take a deep breath in through our nose and out through our mouth, in whatever way it's comfortable for you, offer a prayer. Oh God of life, we know you by many names and in many forms. You are a God who brings us together in times of struggle and in times of celebration to be one whole community. From the stories that I personally am most familiar with, you are a God who heals with mud and with a gentle hand and a touch of the hem of a robe. You tell stories of Samaritans who lift up and bind the wounds of strangers. Heal those of us in Boston who are sick or fearful or recovering from COVID. You are a God who brings together people who speak different languages and come from different places and still lets us understand each other. Help us become a city that welcomes all people, so we will all feel truly part of one community. You are a God who shows the value of fair work and wages by paying all the laborers in the vineyard, no matter when they started. Show us how to be a city that has sufficient jobs for all who want to work and safe conditions and equitable wages for all employees. And finally, you are a God who gives us compassion when we are stretched, energy when we are tired, hope when we are discouraged. Give all of us, especially your city councilors and their staff, all that they need to make our city a place of democracy and love. Amen.
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 Amen. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. End of this all is liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll move on with our agenda. You are certainly welcome to stay on with us, Reverend Liz. Thank you so much for that inspiring prayer. Obviously, we know how busy you are, so feel free to leave at your leisure, but we will move on in our agenda.
Madam President, do we wanted to see if Counsel Wu has joined us?
I don't see her here.
Okay, all right. I'll just make sure I.
I keep my eye out for her, but I don't see her here. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Madam President.
We will move on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of our minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, I will ask you to call the roll.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Madam President, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you so much. We will move on in our agenda to communications from His Honor, the Mayor, beginning with docket 0389. Madam Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Certainly. Docket 0389, message and order for your approval to declare surplus city-owned former Boston Transportation Department parcels of land and transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. The land is located at 18 Hamlet Street, Dorchester, Mass., Wad 7, Parcel 03916000, consisting of approximately 1,450 square feet of vacant land and unencumbered parcel on Hamlet Street, Dorchester, Mass., Wad 7, Parcel 03894000, consisting of approximately 34,720 square feet of vacant land.
Thank you so much. Docket 0389 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We will move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0390 through 0395 together?
Thank you. My pleasure. Docket 0390, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire, Executive Office Officer for the appointment of Thomas V. J. Jackson to the Boston Retirement Board for a term expiring on January 15, 2024. Docket 0391, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing of the Boston Planning and Development Agency of this certificate of project termination for the Denzyme-Austin Landing Chapter 121A project. Docket 0392, notice received from the Mayor of the appointment of Henlon Wong as an ex-official member of the Board of Review. Docket number 0393, communication was received from the Mayor regarding the appointment of Shannon Leveque to the Boston Private Industry Council, Boston Mass. Higher Workforce Board. Docket number 094, I'm sorry, 0394, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor and papers acted upon by the Council at their January 27, 2021 meeting. And docket number 0395, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council at their meeting of February 3, 2021.
Thank you so much. Docket 0390 through 0395 will be placed on file. And we will move on to reports of committees, beginning with docket 0238. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0238, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0238, an ordinance extending and enhancing protections for tenants facing displacement by condominium or cooperative conversions submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Docket 0238, as described above, is an ordinance that essentially enhances and revamps the condo conversion act that we already have. This was sponsored by myself on January 27, 2021, and the committee held a hearing on February 26, 2021. It provides tenant protections for individuals facing displacement because of condo or condominium or cooperative conversions, and will amend the current ordinance already that we have on the books, which is Chapter 10, Section 10-2. The city has the authority to extend these protections for protections facing displacement pursuant to Chapter 528, or excuse me, 527 of the Act 1983. This is really an exciting moment for us. We've had a great deal of discussion with regards to the condo conversion from 2019, and there's been several mini extensions to make sure that we had the robust discussion and really helped to close some loopholes, of which I will describe as the following. First, we're going to increase the benefit for protected classes that include low-income individuals at 80% AMI and also that include our seniors and people with disabilities. That will go from $10,000 to $15,000. We're also going to take the traditional benefits from $6,000 to $10,000 for those who are being displaced but are not fitting one of those special categories. We also are very excitedly going to make sure that if there's a demolition, and oftentimes there's a reduction, that we make sure that there's a certain look-back of 12 months, that if the building is empty, you know, many people purchase a building and say, well, there is no one here, so we didn't have to notify. At that moment, that's what the law says. We're saying you need to look back 12 months. Also, there's the right of first refusal that is part of the current ordinance. It's at 90 days. We've extended that to 120 days. And finally, in summary, one of the other big highlights is that you would, excuse me, I'm sorry, the time of the payment for the relocation benefit shall be within 10 days after the tenant departs as well, so there's no amorphous understanding of when they're going to get their money. And then finally, we're creating a whole category of permitting for condos. In order for people to get a condominium conversion or cooperative conversion, you're going to have to apply for a special permit, and you will have to present your plans to the Office of Housing Stability, so that they can inform the tenants on a specialized form that they're going to create their rights under the condo conversion law. This is very exciting, because again, it's an upstream attempt to try and prevent people from clearing out a building and then saying that no one's there, or selling it, and then hopefully the tenants don't know what their rights are. And so, if this all comes together in fruition, we now have an enforcement agency as well, with ISD at the $300 a day for any violations of the condo conversion act. So, we believe that this helps. In order for us to really make this more robust, we will have to obviously go to State House at some point, because the current law unfortunately only applies to buildings that are four units and above. So if we want to get it down to the nitty-gritty triple-deckers that are becoming condos, we're going to have to go to the State House for that. But for right now, with those larger buildings, four units and above, this is a wonderful, wonderful attempt at trying to revamp, make sure that the rights are also clear, and pursuant to many questions, make sure they're more than one language, as some of our colleagues often remind us they need to be in. And so, I submit this report recommending that this docket ought to pass. This was, I want to thank my colleagues for coming, but I also want to thank the City of Boston for the extensive amount of work. I want to specifically call out Tim Davis for his work on this ordinance.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I just wanted to really thank Counsel Edward for her leadership on this, and also DND and ISD and Mac McCrae from GBLS. I think it's been a real model of collaboration. I'm thinking about some common sense changes that can really increase the friction that prevents these sort of market forces from overwhelming folks who have lived in our neighborhoods for a long time. And I'm really excited about this and grateful to the Chair for bringing it before us today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other discussion. Counsel Edward seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0238. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0238, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Did I call Counsel Edward?
No.
No. Counsel Edward, would you like to support your talk before us today?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0238 has passed. Before we move on, Madam Clerk, if you could please amend the attendance report to reflect that Counsel Wu has joined us?
And Madam President, docket 0238 has passed unanimously.
Wonderful. We will now move on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0104 and 0105 together?
Thank you. Docket 0104, message and order to declare surplus city-owned former public works department parcel known as Windsor Street in the Roxbury District, Ward 9, parcel number 02025020, will transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. And docket number 0105, message and order to declare surplus two city-owned former public works department parcels to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said properties to the Public Facilities Commission. The parcels are located in the Roxbury District at Tremont Street, Ward 9, Parcel 02240020, and Melina Cass Boulevard, Ward 9, Parcel 02225005.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu, who is Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues who joined us for this set of hearings. We had these three parcels and two dockets, as mentioned, and we heard testimony presented by Ms. Shawnee Fletcher and Mr. Donald Wright from DND. These two parcels, or three parcels and two dockets, are all in your district, Madam President, and are small parcels that complete, that would make it possible for the city and the VPDA to be able to assemble larger parcels eventually for disposition and housing in one case and mixed-use development in another case. I want to thank my colleagues who were present and asked great questions at that hearing, City Council Michael Flaherty, Kenzie Bach, Frank Baker, Ed Flynn, Anissa Asabi George, Liz Braden. And we also heard testimony from community members who spoke up in support for the eventual disposition of this land for affordable housing as well. So I recommend that both of these dockets and these three parcels be passed today.
Thank you so much. We're going to take these votes separately. Counsel Wu seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0104. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0104, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0104 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 0104 has passed. We'll move on to docket 0105. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0105, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0105 has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Docket 0105 has been passed. We will move on to docket 0307.
Docket 0307, audit for hearing regarding implementation of the Boston Police Reform Task Force recommendation and the State Police Reform Bill.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell, who is Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a hearing on docket 0307. I want to thank the panelists who took time out of their busy schedules to join us yesterday and to offer up, of course, their thoughts on the matter. This includes Yvonne from Lawyers for Civil Rights, Rasan from ACLU, Jeff Fuhrer from National Lawyers Guild, Carrie Mays, a youth leader from the community, David Hernandez from Jago, which is a Latino law enforcement group of Boston, Larry Calderon from the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. I also want to thank Donald Casey from the Detectives Society, as well as Jean Carroll from the Boston Police Superior Officers Federation, who both had last-minute conflicts but still tuned in and weighed in on the conversation. We were also joined by many council colleagues. So thank you, of course, to my co-sponsors, Counsel Mahia and Arroyo, and thank you to Counselors Flynn, Braden, Asabi George, Bach, Counsel Wu, and Counsel Flaherty for joining the conversation. On Monday, as I said at the hearing, late in the day, we were informed by the administration that no one would be present to testify during yesterday's hearing. They sent, of course, a letter with some general updates regarding the implementation of the state's police reform bill, the task force's recommendations, but they did not provide specifics regarding a timeline for implementation. And of course, we did not have an opportunity to ask anyone in the administration any questions with respect to implementation. And unfortunately, and even worse, and quite sad, there was no information provided or updates in the letter on whether or not there were investigations or ongoing investigations into a possible officer or other officers from our police department who may have participated in the Capitol insurrection or the troubling body camera footage that was released on May 31, 2020. All of this was, of course, intended to be discussed at the hearing, and the administration and the department knew that beforehand. So while it was deeply disappointing, I still remain grateful for the powerful testimony we heard, particularly from the young leaders who participated, including a young gentleman during public testimony, who shared very powerful personal stories about their connection to the policing reform movement, as well as some very personal and painful experiences and interactions with law enforcement. So all of us, I think, learned a great deal, and it just further confirms that it is incredibly important that our department shift in this mindset or culture where we are not transparent or holding folks accountable. Yesterday's hearing really demonstrated that there's a lot more work to do to ensure that the administration is holding folks accountable when things go terribly wrong, pushing a culture of transparency and accountability, and urging actual implementation of all of the incredible pieces of reform we passed last year to, of course, increase accountability, transparency, diversity, and equity, and racial justice in our policing. I look forward to continuing the conversation at future hearings. We'll, of course, push for more conversations in the administration and the departments to show up, to provide answers to all of us on the questions we have with respect to implementation and these ongoing investigations. Thank you, Madam President, and again, thank you to my council colleagues who also participated, and thank you to my co-sponsors, Counselors Mahia and Arroyo.
Thank you so much. Docket 0307 will remain in the Committee of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0262?
Thank you. Docket 0262, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $20,670, I'm sorry, $20,670,810 in the form of a grant to the emergency rental assistance awarded by the United States Department of Treasury to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund assistance to households that are unable to pay rent and utilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edward, who is Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by the Mayor, referred to the committee on February 3. We had our hearing on March 2 yesterday, and I want to thank my colleagues again for coming. Counsel Flynn, Counsel Bach, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Braden, and Counsel Flaherty. I also want to thank the administration, Chief Dillon, Tim Davis, again, Taylor Kane, Katie Ford, and Rick Wilson from DND, all from DND. Essentially, the hearing was tuned to parts, one to explain the $20 million and the goals of it, and then the second part was to give us an update, which I'm happy to relay to everyone about the Rental Relief Fund, where much of that money is going to go. So, there are essentially a couple of things. The new grant funding of about $20 million under the Biden administration removes a lot of the restrictions from the Trump administration. For one, the AMI for those who qualify is higher, it's at 80%. You are allowed to use it for up to 12 months of unpaid rent. You are also able to qualify for this if you had lost your job since March 13 of last year. It pays for front and back rent. It also applies to BHA tenants, which is a huge deal, that many people in BHA did not qualify for other federal funds before, they can now. It will go to the Office of Housing Stability to allow for mediation funds and also helping with court intervention, as in lawyers in court, to help pay out some of that money. And if you are already on SNAP or other forms of public assistance, you will be deemed automatically qualified for this. You do not have to go through another check, which is very important. And also, there would be, most of the money will, yes, go to the landlords directly or to the utility companies, which again, is a huge win. It now pays for not only rent, but also utilities, and they have defined utilities to include the internet. So this is a huge win for many of us who are in need of regular connectivity, especially during this time. And finally, if the landlord is not accepting the payment after a certain amount of time, we can make the payment directly to the tenants. So it corrects a lot of loopholes from last time. So that's where the money ultimately is going to go. And just some statistics about the Rental Relief Fund, as many of you participated in several hearings that we had throughout about the fund, I think it's worth giving that. Small updates, there was a wonderful deck provided by Taylor Kane. But essentially, up to date, as of now, $7 million in assistance has been distributed to over 1,700 households across the city. It's neighborhoods, an average unpaid rent of $3,500. They've updated the RFP for this third round, where it's a one-stop application. There's no more checks or vetting, it's just one time. Landlords and tenants can both file, which is a huge win. All materials are available in 11 different languages and up to $6,000 for court-involved households. So these are huge updates. Again, I want to thank DND. We've learned and kept learning and kept adjusting and kept meeting the need. East Boston has the most applications for rent relief, followed by Dorchester. The City of Boston, social media and friends and families, where a majority of people are finding about the Rental Relief Fund. I challenge all of us as political and elected officials to make sure that the city, while the City of Boston's website's great, our social media and our outreach to all of our constituents should more than top that, there's 13 of us. The fund is available, we need to get people applying. So I would encourage you to look at the deck to see when the next application's coming out and any other further updates. But at this point, it makes sense to get this money moving as possible. So I'm going to ask Counsel President Janey that we suspend and pass at this particular moment this much-needed money. I understand, again, for some of my colleagues, $20 million is a lot, but we did have a thorough hearing about it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Edwards, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0262. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0262, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0262 has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Docket 0262 has passed, so we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, we'll begin with docket 0396.
Docket 0396, Counsel Mahia, offer the following ordinance, mending City of Boston Code, ordinances, chapter 6, section 6-10, language and communication access for city services.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This docket is a refile, but there have been some changes since the last time we filed it, and I wanted to take a few moments to go over some of the big changes. First, we've had the pleasure of designing this ordinance alongside both advocates in the community, such as AARW, the Greater Boston Legal Services, VIA Aid, and others, as well as the administration. We are fighting for better translation and interpretation services all throughout the city. We are saying that any information important enough to put out in English needs to be put out in other languages at the same time. And most importantly, we are saying that people who speak languages other than English are not obstacles to the work, but rather play a critical role in decision-making in our city. The ordinance is about showing the community that we care. We care enough to provide culturally competent translation and interpretation. We care enough that people with disabilities can get the services that they need. We care enough to ensure that everybody has the ability to be heard in city government. We've already put a lot of work into this ordinance last year, so we look forward to seeing this pass quickly so that we can get to the important work of implementing this in all of our city policies and procedures. And I just kind of, you know, I know one of the things that we talked about is being super mindful that there are a lot of folks who don't know how to read and write, even in their own native language. And it's really important for us to recognize the different types of ways that we can communicate with people, utilizing video, audio, and other ways to communicate that does not rely on just interpretation and translation. We see this language access ordinance as really an opportunity for us to really tackle information justice. So looking forward to continuing the work and for my colleagues to support that process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Braden, Counsel Wu, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Bach, Counsel Asabi George. Did I get everyone who wants to be added? Please also add Counselor Campbell and the Chair. This docket, docket 0396, will be referred to the Committee of Government Operations, and at this time, I am going to turn the chair to Counselor O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body docket 0397? You're muted, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0397, Counselors Arroyo and Janey, offer the following ordinance on surveillance oversight and information sharing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Wu as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Arroyo moves to suspension of Rule 12 and the addition of at-large Counsel Michelle Wu as an original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objection, Counsel Wu is hereby added. Please proceed, Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you very much. This is a refile, so I'll be brief. We've already held a hearing on this. The hearing was November 10 of last year. We also held a working session December 7 of last year. And what this ordinance does is this ordinance provides accountability, transparency, and oversight regarding the acquisition and use of surveillance technology and surveillance data by the City of Boston and its agencies and officers. It protects the privacy and civil rights of residents while serving to further racial and gender injustice. It also provides a framework of rules to restrict sharing of private BPS students' information and prohibit the sharing of sensitive information with BPD and other law enforcement agencies, which has in the past contributed to the deportation of Boston schoolchildren. I think that's a full summary for something that we refiled and we've had good discussion on. And so with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank my colleagues, Counsel Arroyo and Counsel Wu, for their continued partnership on this issue. As mentioned, this is a refile. I will keep my comments brief. As surveillance technology continues to advance dramatically, we must be vigilant about where, when, and how it is being used and be very intentional to limit its use to circumstances that are both necessary as well as appropriate. During the hearings last year, it was clear from residents and advocates, particularly young people, the students that Counsel Arroyo has just mentioned, how surveillance and information sharing can not only hurt them but uphold harmful stereotypes and systemic racism when it goes unchecked. As representatives of the public, we must establish appropriate procedures and protocols so that we do not continue to perpetuate those harmful cycles. I look forward to continuing this work with all of my colleagues and hope to advance this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Rosendale. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'll just echo the brevity as well and say thank you so much to my co-sponsors here and the coalition that has put years of effort into coordinating and making sure that we are looking at this from every angle. The pandemic has made this even more urgent as more and more of our interaction with residents, of our education, of all of the infrastructure moves to a digital environment and one in which surveillance becomes or limits on surveillance become increasingly important. So I'm eager to make sure that we're continuing this conversation. And on the, just to shout out that we have seen, as Boston took action on the companion ordinance to this, the face surveillance ban, we saw ripple effects across the country for how other cities and jurisdictions are thinking about this. So eager to lift up our partnership and leadership locally and get this one done as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any further discussion on docket 0397? Seeing no takers, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor on docket 0397? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Julia Mahia. Please add the Chair's name as well. And docket number 0, excuse me, please also add Counselor Michael Flaherty. Docket 0397 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam President?
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the next docket, 0398.
Thank you. Docket 0398, Counsel Flynn, offer the following audit for hearing on the safety of construction sites in the City of Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselors Braden and Flaherty as original cosponsors to this hearing?
Seeing and hearing no objections, Rule 12 is suspended, and it was Braden and Flaherty?
Yes, Madam President.
They have been added. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, there was a tragic accident at a construction site last week in downtown Boston, and two men were killed. We pray for them and their families. It is critical that our residents and construction workers are safe in and around the areas of these construction sites. In recent years, the City of Boston has been experiencing unprecedented building boom with large-scale construction sites in various neighborhoods. These sites have heavy machinery, tall cranes, and the equipment that is in close proximity to the workers, as well as our residents, our workforce, pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. Aside from the tragic incident on High Street, we have unfortunately witnessed several accidents in recent years of injured or even killed construction workers. A construction worker was struck and killed by equipment while setting up first-night celebration in Boston late 2019. An incident where a woman was seriously injured by falling debris from a construction site in the North End in July 2019. A fire at the construction site for the planned Moxie Hotel in the Theater District, April 2019. A fire at the Habon-Coswell Street in March 2019. A 2018 accident that injured a construction worker on the same site. Just today, tragically in Cambridge, another construction worker was killed. We pray for that construction worker and his family as well. Construction workers are a critical part of our workforce in the city, and it is imperative that these sites have the appropriate measures in place to ensure their health and safety. It is critical that we ensure the safety of our construction workers, as well as our residents and workforce. We need to make sure that safety procedures and precautions are adhered to at these work sites and that there is a thorough vetting process for construction companies. I want to use this hearing to discuss how the city can ensure that construction workers and construction sites are safe and that the vetting process for construction companies are thorough in ways that the city can ensure the protection and well-being of our workers and residents as we continue to be in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleague, Counsel Flynn, for adding my name to this hearing order. It's just unspeakable when we think of the loss of life of two young men in Boston last week, Jordan Romero and Carlos Galtieris, working on an emergency sewer repair. And the company concerned has a history of very poor safety adherence. Two years ago, another two workers died in the trench worksite accident with the same company. After that accident, there was the Maddox-Higgins affidavit for workplace safety in which contractors were supposed to sign off on their safety record. But it appears that in this case, this contractor continues to sign off as not having had any accidents or violations, but still is permitted to continue working in the City of Boston. These construction site tragedies are highly preventable and illustrate the importance of construction site safety, especially when cranes and machinery are set up in areas with dense pedestrian traffic or above streets with heavy traffic. No worker or their family member in this city should have to worry about whether or not their loved one will make it home safely at the end of the day. We must ensure that the city's public contracts and permits are not awarded to employers with a history of unsafe and deadly labor practices. This is not optional. We, as a city, must consider whether or not we have been able to prevent companies that have failed to protect their employees from receiving public contracts and permits. There was a rather disturbing article in The Globe on the weekend about this particular accident that highlighted a long history of safety infringements by this particular company. And it begs the question, what are we doing to ensure worker safety in the city? Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank the Counsel Flynn and Counsel Braden for including me and concur with their comments. We've done some work as a body on this issue. We work closely with Counsel Wu and the administration dating back to 2016. And it's clear, based on what happened, that we need to add some language to strengthen it and specifically for companies that get cute and fail to mention or they omit, be it intentionally or accidentally, their prior track record. There should be a penalty for that. Obviously, we should probably include an affidavit by which they sign into the pains and penalties of perjury. And more importantly, in the event of a situation where someone with shady business practices comes in and they lie or omit of previous incidents, and then they get the contract and something happens, there should be a significant ban, arguably possibly even a lifetime ban of doing business with the city. We'll start with a five- or a 10-year ban, maybe, or maybe it's a multi-phased penalty. But anybody that comes here to do business and does not disclose business practices, they need to be held accountable for that. So thank you for including me and adding my name. I look forward to an expedited hearing where we could look at what's in place and specifically adding verbiage that includes, in the event of failing to disclose, an omission, be it accidental or intentional, that they're going to be held accountable and they will not be able to participate and get contractual services from the City of Boston for whatever the length of time we deem is appropriate. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this leadership. As many of you know, it was a year ago, two years ago, a young woman was actually killed in my district due to scaffolding just falling down on her. So this is not just with the workers, this is a matter of safety and people being able to make money in the City of Boston doing shoddy work. And so I also want to remind folks, you know, we do have the standard and ordinance on the books that this is supposed to be happening anyway. So we should be, we're supposed to be monitoring folks and we're supposed to be denying them permitting permits based on their OSHA violations, based on other prior safety issues. So part of this hearing and discussion needs to be, does that law need to be revamped? And also, maybe there possibly needs to be some sort of, as Counsel Flaherty noted, not only a process, a step-up process, but maybe an overall look at a dashboard for folks to be kept there as not the best actors. And I also wanted to add, you know, one of the greatest injuries to workers is not getting paid. So yes, we're talking about death, but there's a slow death if you're freezing in your house because you can't pay rent. And that I have seen also in my district where workers have worked on city projects and the subcontractor did not pay them. They had to get a lien on a city project in order to get paid. So I think this worker safety, worker dignity, right, and construction site safety is a whole conversation. I can't wait for it. So thank you so much to these sponsors.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And frankly, Counsel Edward took my comments, which was just that, as we talk about OSHA violations, and this often comes up in my district as well, or folks in the community proactively doing work so that projects do not have OSHA violations. There are laws on our books right now currently that should have stood in the way of this happening. And that article was extremely troubling and very painful to read. And so I'm absolutely looking forward to the hearing. And so I'm absolutely looking forward to the hearing. Counselor Flynn, thank you, of course, for your continued leadership on this issue, but also on the payment issue. We've partnered, of course, where workers were not getting paid or not classified appropriately. So thank you for your continued leadership, and of course, thank you to the other makers as well. Please do add my name. Absolutely looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'll also be brief. I want to thank the makers. I have a lot of construction sites across my district, and worry about this a lot. And I think it was so important that in the city of Boston, we did shut down construction early on in the COVID pandemic, recognizing that we couldn't continue until it could be safe, and there could be good protocols in place. And I think it's just, it's such a clear case where sort of money and profit motives drive people to cut corners, and I think we've seen in the last week just the disastrous impacts that can have. And I feel like I want to enter into this conversation also that, you know, the origins of unions in our country and abroad were to protect workers from workplace injury and from employers sort of cutting those corners to the cost of life and limb for them. So I just, I think this is like really fundamental, and we're clearly not there yet. And I think, you know, we talk a lot about being a city where we're proud of union workforces and supporting, as has just been said, a good and a living wage. And I think it's just so important to stress that, you know, that worker solidarity is not just a nice thing to have, it's literally a matter of life and death for so many working people. So I think everything this council can do to make our support for that real is important. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the makers and my colleagues who have spoken beforehand. I also just kind of want to uplift, when I think about this, is how do we talk about this and ensuring that we're also protecting our undocumented workers who oftentimes, because of their status, their payments and their pain and suffering often goes unnoticed, and there's very little attention. So I just kind of want to call to light that as we think about this work, we also figure out how we can uplift our undocumented construction workers as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing and hearing no other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu. Did I get everyone who wants to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Docket 0398 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. We'll move on to docket 0399, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0399, Counselor Sabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding gender parity in the naming of public art and places.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This hearing order is a refile from last year and will give us another moment to learn about our history. We name public places, parks, streets, and create statues and art all of the time to commemorate important figures in our community and our Boston history. Yet only 10 of the 125 Boston Public Schools, 2 of the almost 400 properties managed by Parks and Recreation, and none of the Boston Public Library branches are named after women. It's important that we rectify this imbalance, that notable women and people of color in Boston's history are to be honored. I hope we will have an opportunity to hold this hearing this year, as we weren't able to last year. It will give us a chance to find new opportunities to commemorate and celebrate women and people of color. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands, please, of those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Mejia, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, please also add the Chair. Docket 0399 will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, and we will move on to docket 0400.
Docket 0400, Counselor Sabi George offered the following petition for special law regarding the Uniform Procurement Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you again, Madam President. This whole petition looks at our present and our future. As the city's disparity study showed us, we currently have major systemic barriers to ensuring our access to our public contracts for our city's women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. This whole petition will give us more latitude to negotiate procurement contracts and subcontractors in the long term and move us toward a more equitable procurement system. I'll also be filing an ordinance to amend our city process that won't require state action. I'm looking forward to working with you all to further improve this petition and our procurement process in its entirety. We know we need to create rules and practices that actively build a more equitable economy. I believe this whole petition will be necessary, a necessary and important step in doing so.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. As a Chair of Small Business and Workforce Development, I'm really happy to see this energy around these issues. I just, it's more of a question that I have. I'm just curious, I know that you and Counselor Wu have also kind of done some work in this space, so I'm just curious if I can just get some understanding of what the difference is between what we're doing now. You can sidebar with me and tell me later. I just feel like I've heard this before, and now I just feel like we're entering into a home rule petition. I just, I just am really curious about the process, and I just want to be able to understand where and how we're all working collaboratively towards moving our people forward.
Thank you so much. So as you've noted, Counselor Wu and I have partnered over the last several years on this issue, on hearing orders. This is an ordinance, well, a home rule petition, so this is legislation that has been filed, and we can talk more offline. Did you want to make any comments about this, or is there any other discussion about this docket?
No, just please add my name. I'm happy to see progress.
Thank you. Any others looking to add their name? Show of physical hands, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mejia, please also add the Chair. Docket 0400 will be the Committee of Government Operations. We'll move on to docket 0401.
Docket 0401, Counselor Bach offered the following resolution, calling on the MBTA to continue full service of their number 55 bus for the health and well-being of, excuse me, of Boston's Fenway residents.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As I'm sure many folks are aware, the MBTA is moving ahead with the service changes they announced back in December, despite the fact that they've received hundreds of millions in federal dollars in the meantime. And included in that plan is their intention to suspend all service on the 55 bus as of March 14th. The 55 bus, which runs through Fenway and the Back Bay, is really one of District 8's most vital public goods. And yesterday, I sent in my opposition letter to MEPA regarding the suspension of service, but today I wanted to introduce this resolution in council in hopes of bringing attention to not just how harmful for my district the suspension of the 55 is, but also to continue to underscore the view that I know so many folks on this council share, that treating public transit as a sort of business proposition, user-fee-based thing, rather than as a public good, is really short-sighted, and it's going to have incredibly harmful implications for our neighbors, our city, and our planet. We've seen far too often the governors and MBTA's budgetary decisions exacerbate inequality in transit for our vibrant and diverse communities, including our seniors, and we really just can't let this keep on happening. And I, so I wanted to sort of make that real. In my district, for those who may not know, the area of West Fenway, it houses actually a very large number of low-income seniors in St. Cecilia's House, all along Peterborough Street. We've also got a house for returning citizens, transitional housing, and McBride House for long-term AIDS sufferers, and a whole bunch of the people who live in the area, many of these seniors, also folks who are not senior, have mobility issues. And the area is really ringed by these very large streets, so Boilston, kind of Boilston and the Ring Roads, Park Drive, such that if you can't pick up the 55 bus, which comes right into the community, it's very challenging for folks with mobility difficulties to walk the half-mile to get out of the area to kind of the nearest T-stop. So even though you might think of, oh, there's the Northeastern Stop or the Fenway Stop, they're all quite a ways away and across a really treacherous kind of pedestrian pathway for someone with mobility access issues. And in fact, you know, since this was announced, I've heard from numerous seniors who moved to their sites counting on the 55 bus as this kind of lifeline in and out of the community. We've got a bunch of Chinatown community service users, so Chinese seniors who live at St. Cecilia's House and go and spend the day with their community on, take the 55, folks going to the Copley Library to spend the day, folks going to Trader Joe's to do their shopping. And when told that the ride is their alternative, say, this is going to mean I have to wait hours and hours, I'm not going to be able to plan my days. It's just really incredibly disruptive. I've got a guy who's been living at McBride House for 27 years and riding the 55 as part of getting to his regular AIDS treatment from MGH, and he's like, I have to find a whole new hospital to care for me, I'm going to have to begin again. I just, I'm so frustrated with the MBTA because of the metrics-based look at this. I told the seniors in St. Cecilia House to stay home in the pandemic, and so guess what? They're not riding the bus. And then a whole bunch of the commuters who usually use it to get into jobs downtown in the Prudential Center are, yes, have not been using it this year, but the people who have been using it are the people who rely on it for these critical, critical functions. And frankly, it's also the way that we get neighbors in and out on a regular basis in the neighborhood when other modes are completely crowded by SOX games and concerts and such. And, you know, as we look as a state to start reopening those uses and hope that it becomes safer to do so, again, the idea that you're going to take this outlet for kind of the regular folks who live in the West Fenway community away is just so infuriating. So I know that this is a District 8 issue, but I think it's representative of the harm that these service cuts cause across the board, and I would ask colleagues today to join me in supporting this resolution. I'm really grateful to all the Bostonians who have been reaching out to the MBTA so far on this. If someone's watching at home, you can call 617-222-3200 to leave a voice comment, or send an email to publicengagement@mbta.com. We're still really asking them to reconsider, but it would mean a lot to me and District 8 and the Fenway today if the council would join me in support of this resolution. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Bach. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
I'd like to add my name to this resolution. I feel that very often these MBTA cuts are made without adequate consultation with the people who are most impacted by the changes to the schedule or loss of a service completely. So I applaud Counselor Bach for her raising this issue and vigorously defending her constituents in her neighborhood who rely on this very essential public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Show of physical hands for those who want to add their name to this important resolution. Madam Clerk, you already have Counselor Braden. Let's also add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Baker. Did I get everyone who would like to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counselor Bach seeks suspension of rules and adoption of docket 0401. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0401, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yep, yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0401 has been unanimously adopted.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Counselor Bach. The Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, if we could reconsider 0399, I'd like to sign on to that.
Wonderful. Can we add Counselor Baker's name to docket 0399? Did I get it right?
Yes, perfect.
I'd also like to point out that it's 107. We are doing slowly here. Wonderful. We will move on to personnel orders now. Madam Clerk, could you please read the docket 0402?
Certainly. Docket 0402, Counselor Janey for Counselor Flaherty.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0402. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0402, Life and Doom. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. This is for personnel order. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0402 has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Moving on, I think there is one late file matter. I want to make sure that everyone just takes a moment to check their email. We will obviously, to add this to the agenda, it'll be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please read the late file?
I'll read first and last, Madam.
That would be great.
Certainly. Offered by Counselor Andrea Campbell in City Council, whereas media sources reported that a member or members of the Boston Police Department may have participated in the violent insurrection at the U.S. Capitol in Washington, D.C., based on several social media posts that have been seen and deleted. Documents related to the Boston Police Department's investigation of officers may have participated in the insurrection and violent attacks on the nation's Capitol from January 6th to present, specifically, one, documents at the status of department's investigation, two, documents on any related disciplinary action, and third, the date by which the public can expect a report of finding of this investigation, which my colleagues and I requested on February 1st, 2021. This is a 17F public information request.
Thank you. And so we need just to take a roll call vote to add it to the agenda.
Correct.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Thank you. For the late file from Counselor Campbell, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Oh, I meet myself. Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. And Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu. Madam President, the late file is properly before the body.
Thank you. And at this time, I will call upon Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Yesterday, we held a hearing in the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee on Yesterday, we held a hearing in the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee on docket 0307. It was for a hearing regarding implementation of Boston Police Reform Task Force recommendations in the State Police Reform Bill. As I mentioned earlier, in the letter from the administration, there was no information on whether or not there were investigations into the officers who participated in the Capitol insurrection or a timeline or any other specifics on that investigation. And I have said, including at the hearing, that I refuse to accept that Bostonians have to wait for answers and accountability about whether or not a Boston police officer or officers participated in that violent attack on our national Capitol and whether or not, of course, they are still patrolling our streets. And I have consistently gotten questions from residents about these reports and whether we have information about this officer after nearly two months since January 6th. And it's unacceptable that we don't have any answers to respond with. If, of course, the police department had attended yesterday's hearing, I, and I'm sure along with other colleagues, would have asked specific questions about this particular investigation. So now, of course, it has to come in the form of a 17F. And the request is quite simple. As our clerk just said, it's for confirmation of an investigation. And if the department is indeed doing one, it's also for the status of that investigation and whether or not if any disciplinary action has been taken. Looking forward to getting these responses from the department within two weeks. And of course, we'll share that information with council colleagues as well as the public. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. First late file matter, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Madam President, I just wanted to say one statement, but I don't know if I'm out of order or not. I was trying to find the raise my hand, and I was unable to. So can I just make a quick, like, observation?
We've started. We're in, yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a precedent that was set last week. So, I mean, it says that we're in the middle of an investigation. I don't think that we're able to, that the police will be able to comment on this if we're in the middle of an investigation.
Point of order, this is a roll call, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. Yes.
Counselor Baker, well, if you want to make comments on it, you can certainly do so in the announcement section since we've already thrown the roll call. Appreciate that. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, the 17F late file from Counselor Campbell has passed.
Thank you. Yes, just to be sure that I'm on the record there. Thank you. I believe that's the only late file matter.
It is.
Wonderful, wonderful. We are moving right along. I don't think anyone wants to remove anything from the green sheets, but just checking. Okay. We will keep moving on to the consent agenda. I don't think there's been any additions. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the roll, please.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yeah.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, the consent agenda has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted, so we will move on to announcements. Show of Zoom hands. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm excited, on behalf of the Boston City Council, to send very happy and excited and best wishes to my first-grade nun, Sister Evelyn Hurley, who will turn 106 this Sunday. So as you know, Sister Evelyn has been invited to the Boston City Council to give an invocation every year in March since she turned 100. She wasn't able to do it last year due to COVID, and obviously this year to COVID. She's actually currently down at the Mother House in Kentucky. Sister is a charity in Nazareth. She just recently received an award as the oldest resident to get the vaccination shot at 105 and almost 106. But I will send our best wishes to her on her birthday, and I will extend an invitation to her from us to be here for her 107th birthday. And she can once again deliver the invocation to the Boston City Council in March. She always comes back to Boston in the month of March. And I just want to let everybody know what she means, obviously to me and to the South Boston community, but also what she means to the council. Her dad served as a city councillor, as some may remember. She takes a lot of pride in municipal government and in the city council because she grew up with her dad being a city councillor. And of course, she has a great legacy of herself. She's taught half the community, if not all the community, for many, many years. She's beloved, and we wish her the very best, and we wish her all the success for many more birthdays to come. So thank you, Madam President, and happy birthday to Sister Evelyn Hurley.
You're here.
Thank you. Happy birthday. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just wanted to note the passing of two constituents of mine. One is Jerry Moretti, who was a proud member, a former officer and peace committee member of the beloved St. Anthony Society in the North End. He is deeply loved by all who met him. I had the pleasure of meeting him on several occasions. And he is, he's gone with God now. And it was, I was at his way, at his funeral mass, and just to hear the deep love pouring out from many people in the community for him, including our state representative, Michael Witz, who is also a member of St. Anthony's, there was a lot of laughs, a lot of tears. And it's just a sad moment to see someone so great leave and go home. But I just wanted to acknowledge his loss. I also wanted to acknowledge the loss of another great giant in East Boston. She's really a pillar of East Boston, E.D. DeAngelis. She's a lifelong activist who fought for every bit of space in East Boston. She fought acre by acre to get the land back to East Boston to what she says, and many people have said, that Massport stole. She's part of the original Maverick Street Mothers and was a member of many groups that set the standard for activism in East Boston. She actually helped me get my scholarship off the ground that is in the name and honoring those mothers and those proud women who laid down on the ground and also used their baby carriages to block the trucks from developing in their neighborhood. She had her finger on everything. She was a founding member of the Freedom Foundation with Judge Farino, and she was a longtime Noah Board member and a fighter for affordable housing before it was cool to say. When it meant integrating, when it meant class and race integration, she was there fighting for it. And she single-handedly wrote a letter every week for 15 years to get them to empty the gas tank on Condor Street, the head site. She is tenacious, and she saw East Boston's future and fought tooth and nail for it. And we inherit that legacy in the green space that we do have and the cleaner that we do get. So we take our lessons from her and her legacy, and I and many others stand on her shoulders. She is also gone with God, and she's up there organizing, fighting, and working with the angels, I am sure. But E.D., you are deeply missed. You are one of the great ones, and we're so sorry to see you go. And it was just beautiful that in one of her last videos or last comments she made was actually passing the torch to the new mothers who won the scholarship at the scholarship I started, to those women as well, for them to meet her and for her to explain, you never get anything for free. You have to fight for it. So God bless you. Rest in peace, E.D.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today I wore purple. It's the color of recovery. It's actually a sad anniversary for me. It's the 28th anniversary of my brother Ricky's passing. He overdosed on heroin March 3rd, 1993, left three small children at home. And it, and it put me on a path, like, life really changed me that day. I wish I could say that Ricky was my first person that I lost because of drugs. I wish I could say that Ricky was my last person that I, that I lost because of drugs. Neither of those statements are true. But, but just to make sure that I honor my big brother here today. He was, he was one of my heroes, great at hoop. Ladies loved him. He could dance. He had it all. Total package. Everybody loved him, but he didn't necessarily love, love himself. So just to say, Ricky Baker, we love you. We miss you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Baker. The Chair recognizes Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to make a particular note, and I guess a good note of thanks and gratitude that President Biden today sent the directive around teacher vaccinations. And just want to note that the governor also rolled this out this morning that starting March 12th, educators from K to 12, as well as early childhood educators, will have access to the vaccine for appointments starting next week. So grateful for that, certainly long overdue, but happy as it will help the return of our students to the classroom in a safer manner. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to uplift a few things. One is February 27th was the 177th Dominican Day Independence. And Madam President, you know the Dominicans see you as one of their own, so happy Independence Day to you, too. And I also wanted to just uplift the Boston Black COVID Coalition and all of their work this past weekend in making sure that communities of color understand how important it is to get vaccinated. And I know you were out there pounding the pavement and my colleagues as well. So just want to just highlight the efforts of those who are really leaning into equity as it relates to vaccination. And so I just wanted to uplift that. And then I also just want to bring to the space that there are several groups, particularly the South End and Lower Roxbury Partnership Group, have been really on social media and educate, trying to advocate on behalf of the fact that as the weather gets nicer, the safety of a lot of the residents that live there, they feel somewhat uneased by all of it all, and just really wanted to just highlight that. You know, there is a lot of work that we all can be doing to support those efforts. You know, we have a lot of folks who are unhoused. There's a lot of tension between different groups. And I would love for the city to really wrap their arms around this conversation in a way that is not continuing to pit one group against the other. I think that we all could do much better if we all recognize the role that we play in moving the conversation forward. And then the last thing that I want to say, just want to give a big shout out to Carrie Mays, who is a fierce youth advocate. I believe she might be in your district, Madam President, because, you know, you breed the best. And she was actually one of our speakers yesterday during the police accountability hearing, and she brought so much sense of fire and energy to the conversation. And I think that when we think about community voice and we think about activism, it's important to highlight all of the things that are happening across the city and the leaders that are, that are moving the work forward. So, so thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Are there other announcements? Let me just make mention of a couple of folks that we've also lost. One, one of our own Boston Police Detective, Sharice Brittle Powell, passed away over the weekend after 27 years of service on our police force. And so we certainly lift her up and her family up. And all of the police officers who are mourning her loss. Also want to make mention that we lost an icon as well. We lost Vernon Jordan, civil rights legend over the last couple. Oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor Edwards, yes. Yes, so I just want to make mention, and we will certainly lift them up in our tribute as we close out today's council meeting. And we will continue to lift up all of those residents who we have lost to COVID-19, as well as the opiate epidemic. So we will move on to our tributes. As is our tradition, we will close out this council meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Braden, Alexandra Sandy Connors and Michael McCormick. For Counselor Campbell, and the entire city council, Sharice Britle Powell. For Counselor Edwards, Edith DeAngelis and Jerry Moretti. For Counselor Flaherty, Teddy Carter, Catherine Joyce, and Nicholas Rochodas. For the Chair, Elise Young, Lenny Whaler, and Vernon Jordan. And again, for the entire police department, our Boston's own police detective, Sharice Britle Powell. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again remotely on Wednesday, March 10th, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Council meeting is adjourned.
1:29.
Yay.
Thank you.
Record.
Good job, everybody.
Record for 2021. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.